All right, Clark, let's go ahead and do a do roll call.
Okay. So it's got Board Member Arius. Present? You muted? I need it on that.
Sorry, I'm here.
It's okay. Looks like Vice Chair Bretta Feld is absent at the moment. And Chair Sparza, present?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Fantastic. Excuse me?
Is this a public meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
It is. It's agendized and all. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay. There's second?
Second.
Thank you. Board Member Arius?
Present.
And Chair Sparza?
Hi.
Madam Clerk, I just got a text message from Councilmember Bretta Feld saying he's trying to get in.
I see him now, so he's gonna be let in just a moment.
Okay.
Okay, he is here as well.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. There's second?
Second.
Thank you. Board Member Arius?
Present.
Vice Chair Bretta Feld?
Yeah.
And Chair Arius, excuse me, Sparza?
Hi.
Esses?
All right, fantastic. Well, let's get to the meat and potatoes. So we have the presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Finance Report, as well as the debt report. I'll hand it off to the administration and let them open it up.
Mike Lima, would you like for me to run that PowerPoint for you, or do you have it up?
However you want. I've got it on my screen. If you would like to make me co-host, I'll run it. If you want to run it, I'm good.
Okay.
Whatever works for you.
I'll follow your lead. You go for it.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, council members. Mike Lima, Finance Director/Controller, before you today. Going to talk about the FY20 CAFER and CATER. So let's go to the next slide. So what is a CAFER and a CATER?
Are you guys seeing the presentation?
Yeah, the the.
No, I don't. Oh. Okay, hold on one second. Mike, can you share your screen?
Now I can, yeah. It says host disabled participant, screen sharing. So no, I can't right now.
Okay, hang on one second. Let me give you that permission. Okay. You should have that capability now.
Let's see.
And if not, I'll take over.
See. Ah, there it is. Okay. All right, let's go here. Thank you. Let's see, from the beginning. Okay. Let's start from the top. Good afternoon, council members. Mike Lima, Finance Director/Controller. Today, we're going to be presenting the FY20 CAFER and CATER for your information and consideration. So what is a CAFER and a CATER? Well, the CAFER is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Under the municipal code, section 7103, the administration is required to provide annual financial statements. But it doesn't actually say to produce a CAFER. We could probably kick out a balance sheet and an income statement and meet the requirements of the municipal code. But the CAFER is a truly a comprehensive set. It looks at all the different financial elements of the organization. It is very heavily defined by the Government Accounting Standards Board. They dictate what goes in it, what the wording is. And so a CAFER is much broader than just the income statement and balance sheet. Again, it gives you information about debt. It gives you information about pensions. It gives you information about the overall financial condition of the organization as of June 30th. One of the regulations that GASB requires is that it must be audited by an independent auditor using generally accepted governmental auditing standards. In 2015, council approved a contract with Brown Armstrong Accountancy Corporation to serve as the independent auditor who verifies the accuracy of the City of Fresno's CAFER. Also, just so you know, the GASB also awards, or I should say the Government Finance Officers Association, which is very closely associated with GASB, awards a certificate of excellence for achievement, or certificate of achievement in excellence in reporting. The City of Fresno has received that award for 27 years for its CAFER. And we are actually submitting the FY20 CAFER to them at the end of this week for consideration to receive this award, and we are very confident we will be receiving it again for. So that will make 28 straight years that we've received this. The Conference of Annual Debt Report, or CATER, it's specifically about debt. And so it's a lot more narrow focus than the CAFER. The CATER is required under the city's debt management policies. And on this slide, you see the resolution with the article and section that specifically mandates the production of a CATER. GASB does not define a format for the CATER. And the document itself is not audited by the independent auditor. However, there's about, of all the numbers in the CATER, probably about 80% of them show up in the CAFER as well. So I'd say that a lot of the CATER is audited as a result of auditing the CAFER, but in its entirety, it is not looked at and audited by the by the independent auditor. And thus does not have the independent auditor's opinion letter at the front of it like the CAFER does.
Director, would you prefer if we interject with our questions, or you want to you want to get through this?
However you like to do. I can take questions as I go along, or I can or I can wait till the end, whatever's the preference of the council.
Just a few on this slide. How long is this the firm's contract, the auditor, the Brown Armstrong?
So Brown Armstrong's contract is seven years. So we have one more CAFER to do with them, the FY21. And then we were going to go back out to bid again and and award a contract at that time. So one more year left on the contract.
Okay. And so, I mean, there is there's some sort of overlapping accountability in the the CATER. I mean, what do you think the marginal cost of including an audit of the CATER would be if that was to be added to the RFP RFQ?
You know, probably not very much. Because like I said, they're already auditing probably about 80% of the numbers in the CATER are audited as part of the CAFER. I would say it probably is a very small marginal cost. I would say maybe $5,000 to $10,000 would be my guess. It wouldn't be a whole lot that we'd be adding to it.
Okay, well, that's something we should consider as as we move forward. I don't know how the other board members feel about that. But if it's not going to increase the cost of the contract by very much, we could just kind of cover both.
Okay.
All right, that'll be it for this slide.
Okay. Thank you. So let's take a look at, let's get into the CAFER itself. And really, there are two main areas that we will take a look at today. The first one is government-wide. So what government-wide represents is the entire city organization. This is all funds combined, everything put together. So general fund, enterprise funds, ISFs, special revenues, everything's rolled together in this one statement. And so you can find this statement on pages, as I look here, pages 31 and 32 of your CAFER, if you have the hard copy in front of you. If you have the PDF you're looking at, it would be pages 58 and 57 of the PDF. So let's go through some of the elements. I'm going to start on page 32 of the hard copy or 58 of the PDF. So this is the basically your income statement. It's it shows revenues and expenses. Overall, as a city, our revenues rose 2.4%, or 20.7 million to 873.2 million. Saw a big increase in operating grants, and that is the CARES dollars that we received. Not only the CARES dollars that we received as a city, the 92.8 million that a lot of you are familiar with, but also the 13 million that the airport received and the 30, I think it's 32 and a half million or 33 and a half million that FACS received as well. All that money is up in this operating grant increase. We also received a 16.4 million increase in capital grants, 10.1 million increase in general revenues, mainly property tax, a little more investment income. And we did have a slight increase in sales tax last year. However, we had a huge decrease in charges for services. So this would be like your development fees, your park fees, your, the ones that we really saw a big decrease in were fees that were charged by our public safety services, both fire and police. Police did not get a the full reimbursement for the officers that were assigned to schools from Fresno Unified. So that was that is part of that decreases in here. And then fire also did not get, by June 30th, did not get full reimbursement on claims that they had with the state regarding mutual aid that they assisted with on various fires. Yes.
If I may, on on the police stuff with the districts, is my understanding that we didn't receive full reimbursement because our officers weren't assigned to schools because the schools are closed? So the office doing regular patrol work and the district refused to pay us for work that officers never conducted on their behalf?
Yeah, and that's that is a definitely a reason why we did not get that full reimbursement level that we had received in the previous year. That's absolutely one of the reasons. Yes.
But was that revenue budgeted? So we were expecting it to come in, and it didn't come in. So that's why there's the decrease.
Correct. And 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 how am I understand the decrease? Because when we gave COVID funds to public safety, the assumption was that we were giving public safety a huge allocation of COVID funds to make up for lost revenue that we expected, that being one example of that, right?
So if you, yeah, exactly. And that's what I was getting to on this point. You'll notice there's a 47.7 million decrease from charges for services, but there's a 41.6 million increase in operating grants. That's that CARES dollars that I mentioned previously. So those two almost canceled each other out. So we did get CARES dollars to backfill. Those lost charges of services, you know, in a sense, we've got that. But there's still a decrease in each of these in this category, offset by an increase in a different category, I guess.
On that subject matter, Mike, how do we account for contract hours of officers? I know half of our officers are doing contract hours, so that's revenue generated by, you know, Walmart or Apple. Do we budget our budget assuming that that revenue is coming in? Or how's that accounted for?
I can tell you that the actual revenue is in this charges for services that you see here in front of you. So it was part of that $47.7 million decrease. So as those stores were closed during the early days of the pandemic, that also contributed to this decrease that we did not have that contract income coming in. In terms of budget, I, you know, to be honest, I'm not sure if it's in the budget or not. I, my guess is it is, but I'm not sure that I.
Do you know, do you know, do we build our budget on the assumption of, you know, contract hours?
Yeah.
You're on me.
I'm on this. Oh.
Sorry, George Dan's on mute.
All right, I don't know the answer to that, but I'll get you an answer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on revenues or? Okay, so expenses. Expenses grew at a much more rapid rate, 12.1%. So we increased our expenses by $86.6 million. The bulk of that was in public protection or public safety expenses. We're talking, and most of those were salary or personnel costs, I should say. So and that's the whole gamut of of personnel costs. So it's not just salaries, it's also fringe costs. It would be workers' comp, overtime, anything like that was is in there. But it had a rather substantial increase this past fiscal year. We also had a pretty significant increase in public ways expenses.
Mike, pause on that, on the workman's comp. I've been hearing the number of 150 officers are, you know, on workman's comp claims that are pending. What is the actual number? And is that the reason for the increase? Significant increase cost in workman's comp, is it police, or is it across the board?
In typically, you know, the public safety, both police and fire are the largest contributors to workers' comp claims in the city. That is, that has historically been the case. In terms of what's going on right now, I also don't have that information right in front of me, but I could certainly get that for you.
We can get it for you, council member. You want to know the number of workers' comp claims in the police department and fire department?
Correct, because what I'm hearing, George Dan, and I don't know what's true and what's urban legend, right? But that when a transition of leadership happens, you see a spike in officers' retirements, and they file for workman's comp to be able to, you know, get a disability retirement. I know that we're short of officers, but 150 seems to be really extremely high for that many officers on workman's comp claims that are not. And it might be helpful to understand, are those guys really off work? Or are they just doing like a desk duty or modified duty or some kind that? They may be available. They're just not available for patrol or for whatever other specialty work they were doing.
Okay, we'll get you. We'll get you the information.
Okay. Moving on, we also had a $10.4 million increase in enterprise fund expenses, and most of this was the water fund. About 7 million of this 10.4 million was in water. And that is due to the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Plant coming online, having a full year of expenses underneath its belt. And so it had a rather substantial increase in those expenses. Moving on to page 31 of the of the book or 57 of the PDF. This is the balance sheet and some key points on this are assets increased by a very small percentage, 0.7%. But that 28.2 million increase pushes us to a record $4 billion assets. This is the first time in our organization's history that we've had 4 billion of assets. Now, most of that is in fixed assets, buildings, streets, streetlights, pipelines, things like that. That's where the bulk of our assets are. But we still saw some increase in other areas as well. We had a $52.6 million increase in cash and investments. Again, this is CARES. We got 92.8 million at the end, toward the end of the fiscal year. And a lot of that is in, or all that 92.8 is part of this overall 52.6 million increase. I mentioned about capital assets. We had a big increase there, $80.1 million. And then we also had a $123.5 million decrease to in our net pension asset. And I'll talk more about the net pension asset a little later in the presentation. Our liabilities grew by 5.1% to $1.5 billion. And so, and most of that was because of what what's called unearned revenue. So as I mentioned, we got 92.8 million of CARES at the end of April. We hadn't spent most of that. We had received the cash, but had not spent it or had not incurred the expense yet. A lot of that happened after June 30th. So $66.3 million is put as a liability, which means it's going to get spent in the near future, is basically what that means. So it's treated as a liability on our balance sheet. But at the end of the day, you've got 4 billion of assets. You've got about 1.5 billion of liabilities. So your net position, your difference between assets and liabilities, improved to a record 2.6 billion, which was a $70.9 million increase. I think, though, it's important to note that most of that is restricted. And the portion that's unrestricted, it actually declined by $19.8 million. So that what that means, basically, we dipped into our our collective savings account to help us get through COVID, to help us get through some of the economic downturns that were the result of COVID. Excuse me, COVID. We saw that. We saw that starting to happen at the end of last fiscal year.
Mike, so question for you on restricted. So restricted is buildings, things of that sort, and unrestricted is more cash positions. Is that right?
Yeah, you could look at it that way. It's basically, it's either restricted because it's it's invested in a capital asset, a fixed asset like a building, or it's restricted because there's some legal restriction on it. For instance, the emergency reserve is a good example. We have, you know, $35 million at the end of the year in that. But under under the legislation of the city, that's restricted. You can't just use that for at any given time. So there's, so it's restricted, like I said, one way or another. It's a building or an asset, a fixed asset, or it's restricted legally. And the unrestricted portion has neither. It's it's open.
It's restricted also. It's not easily liquid.
Exactly. Yes, yes, yes. Any other questions on this slide? Okay. I'm going to move on to the general fund. Everyone likes to look at the general fund and wonder how that turned out. So the general fund financial statements can be found on pages 37 and 30, 37 and 35 of your book, or pages 62 and 64 of the PDF. So let's start again with revenues and expenses. Revenues rose $12.6 million to $345.6 million. The growth was caused by increase, primarily caused by increase in tax revenues. Again, like I mentioned, we had very strong property tax revenues last year. We had good, we had good, sales tax actually turned out a little better than the previous year. So the effect of the pandemic didn't didn't detract from sales tax overall. But in it, but after those 14.5 million tax revenue increases, we have a $1.5 million decrease in firefighting aid payments from the state of California, which I mentioned earlier.
Mike, I just want to confirm the top line. It says revenue rose blah 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 in 2020. You mean fiscal year 2020, right?
Fiscal year 2020.
June of 2020. So just a couple minute, couple months into the pandemic.
Exactly.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, George Dan. You are right.
Okay.
Okay. So while expenses rose 12 points or revenues rose 12.6 million or 3.8%, expenses grew $34.2 million. And the bulk of that was in public protection. You saw large increases, again, personnel costs are driving it. That gap, 11.8% growth in expenses and 3.8% growth in revenues is frankly an unsustainable path. You can't have that kind of difference between the two over a long term. It made sense for this past fiscal year as we were getting into COVID and and trying to address that. But long term, it is a challenge for the organization if we are continuing on that path. On the balance sheets. Yeah.
Quick on on the expenses growing. I recall in one of the 21, you know, acts that Gary helped lead draft related to, you know, governance of the city. In one of those labor management acts, it's very clear that this council must receive a five-year projection to justify any labor increases. And I recall in that five-year projection, when we approved the last labor increase of 5%, staff basically concluded that we could afford that to absorb that increase over a five-year period. So I'm having trouble kind of making both of those match up with the growth of the expenses are rising too fast versus the revenue. But yet you all recommended that we improve a significant raise because we had sufficient money.
So I think I can explain, I can take a stab at explaining that. I think when the the projection was shown for the police contract, that was pre-COVID. And so we did not know that revenues would be, the revenue growth would slow down to the level that it had. I mean, we still have 3.8% revenue growth in the general fund, but I think we were projecting more like four or five in order to keep pace with with those contracts. And so I think when the projection was initially made, it it could pencil out. But as time has gone on and as the pandemic has hit, that has turned out to that assumption or that that scenario has not materialized the way that it was initially planned.
So Mike, is it fair to say that there's basically a 2% difference between the projections that we saw prior to COVID and the current projections that allowed us to justify the the police rates? Is it about 2%?
You know, I didn't, I wasn't part of that in that presentation, so I don't know exactly. I mean, I have an idea. I was, don't know exactly. But if it were 5%, if we had projected 5% revenues, then you are absolutely right. You're, the the model has not grown to the level, or the actuals have not grown to the level that the projection had said.
We can try and dig up, I mean, it was before our time, but we can try and dig that up. I don't know. Do you recall who who did the presentation?
It was Personnel, the Personnel Director, provided us the projections.
Yeah.
And in anticipation for that agreement. The reason I asked George Dan is, I remember then asking, okay, these five-year projections only take into account one labor agreement. We got like five or six others that are either expired or in the process of negotiating. How do we justify enough cap room in the growth of projections with increasing expenses to say that we have room for the other five or six agreements that are all kind of pending, right? And 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 I recall folks telling us that there was enough room there. But if there's a 2% difference, I don't see how that is. And the reason I'm asking these questions is, as we get into budget, I want to be very clear on setting expectations for everyone. If the choice is between layoffs and raises, or is it between status quo and layoffs? Because we got the dooming bloom budget presentation from our former city manager. And then three months later, we somehow were, you know, 10 times in a better financial situation.
Yeah, I I am also interested. I can talk with Personnel and try and dig up what was presented and kind of do a comparison to what was projected. And in all honesty, just in, I believe it's, I think it's next week's meeting. I think there's going to be the item on the agenda for the SAFER grant for the officers, the 42 officers. And one of the things that we made sure that fire was bringing forward was the long-term impact of when those firefighters are going to roll onto the general fund. Just, just so everybody knows, you know, just so everybody is clear. And it doesn't say whether or not we can afford it in the other year, in the out years, because that's in 2026. And we don't, you know, I don't know that anyone can project, but at least we know how much more is going to roll onto the general fund so that as as the elected officials are making decisions, you're like, okay, wait a minute. We know fire is going to be 6 million in '26. We know so-and-so is going to be, you know, you guys can make, it's kind of like piecemealing in sequoia. You know, you want to have the whole picture of what's.
Escalating mortgage payment, we know it's coming.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I'll try and dig up the PD information to the best that I can, if I can, you know, track it down for you.
Thank you.
Question, and follow up to what Miguel is saying. The 5% is that a typical revenue expectation each year?
You know, over the past few years, it has been, and we've had some pretty good growth. Up until the pandemic hit, we were, we were coming in at about a 5% revenue growth rate each year, between four and five. So that I think that was a fair assumption. As I think we all know that no one foresaw the pandemic and no one foresaw the effect it might have. But yes, to answer your question directly, yes, given recent history, a 4% to 5% revenue growth in the general fund was a safe assumption.
Well, that may be Miguel, you know, where they were coming from. If it's a typical routine, 4% or 5%, I don't know. I mean, I recall the same conversations you did.
I think, Gary, where I'm going is that, you know, the the revenue dip that we expected in the pandemic didn't come to fruition because people spent money, right? That's why we had an increase in sales tax. There's probably a decrease in gas tax that might decrease SB1. But really, what's escalating is the ongoing expenses. Every employee and every capital project gets more expensive by the year. So I wonder whether it's time for the council to look at this at the expense side and try and make some adjustments there to slow down the 12% growth rate versus simply, you know, projecting down on the revenue side, so.
And and council member, remember, most, I mean, the largest percentage of increases in expense are labor contracts, personnel services. Yeah, it's people and and raises and, you know, each year or additional step that maybe the first year only, you know, 40 people are rolling into, but then the second year, it's 100, and the third year, it's 120. So, you know, that's always been the case for as long as I've been here, you know, our people, while they're our greatest assets. While they're our greatest asset, they're also our greatest expense as well.
And to your point, George Anne, one of the conversations we had in the last budget was all these hundreds of vacancies that are still in the books.
Yeah.
You guys budget for, but you never fill.
And by the way, that's being completely done differently in the fiscal twenty two budget. You will not see that.
So are you guys going to get rid of them or are you just going to fill them?
Um, we're what right now, we're going through the exercise of having, so for instance, in certain departments like planning and development where we have, we need more staff because we have high activity and we can't get, we're adding staff there. In certain departments, for instance, that are going to be affected by measure P, we're going to add staff there. In other departments, but what we're going to do is we're telling them, do not submit for new positions. Look on the vacancy list and you either need to use a vacancy or you need to reclassify a vacancy into what you have. There's no reason what you need. You don't need to be creating new positions. So other than those positions, we will, we, they're going to be defunded. I don't know that depending, we're not far enough along to know. I don't know that will eliminate, but we're definitely going to defund some positions and it'll be very clear that there's this many positions funded and there's this many positions not funded.
You know, Miguel, this is an ongoing issue that we all deal with in terms of these raises. I've made the argument, I had. I think we've done it every year. I don't think it was just the last two years. I've said, just because we give three percent to one group, why do we have to give the same? Or even a raise to another group if we can't afford it? And we have a council, I think most members who feel like if one gets it, everyone got to get, everyone has to get it. And so it goes on down the line. So there's never a, there's never a no. We never do a no. And that's, that's the issue. Now, I know you raised the issue about cops and all of that. You know, we have different philosophies about it. For me, that's where we got to put our resources with public safety. But the issue I think for council members is if one gets it, everyone gets it and and therein to me is the problem.
Yeah. And to your point, Gary, I would agree that that's been our philosophy, but it's also been the philosophy of every mayor that's recommended those raises.
I agree.
Because they negotiate and they come to us and say, hey, we agreed on three percent and we can afford it, you know, just to prove it.
Absolutely. And Georgianne knows that because she's supporting all these mayors from before with these races.
No, and well, I got to be the part of the mayor that we actually cut. You know, let's remember, we have them giving back money. But to your point, there, we were the ones who put into despite former mayor brand, the the spreadsheet that you all are supposed to get in closed session that shows the long term implication of labor increases because it, you all may be gone. You know, when by the time, you know, the rubber meets the road, but the next person that comes on and inherits an empty cupboard and it's like, how did this happen? We want to make sure that it's very, very clear. And so it'll be clear if that document is being presented. There, we better be doing a whole lot of other work to grow the pie. You know, so there's the cutting expenses, but and then it's also what can we do to increase revenues?
I I think you guys have done a good job of telling the council the the long term implications of any group, but it's never disclosed to the public. That document never becomes public. So the public thinks that every year we have money and the labor groups think that every year we have money to give more and more. And in the budget proposal, the escalating cost for each unit is also not represented. So for example, I've been asking, we gave the police department, not because they're police, but because of the biggest department, forty million dollars and more money in the last two years. Break it down to me where that forty million went. How much went to raises? How much went to, you know, capital? How much?
I thought we did a trade memo on that. If not, I'll make sure that we recirculate that because I know, I remember you talked to Tommy about that and we went back and dug up the information. So.
It's not for my benefit, it's for the public to understand. It costs more money just to get the same level of service.
Yeah. Just so you know, the budget format, so we've been having very early budget meetings and the information, the way it's been presented to me and Tommy, I couldn't make heads or tails of it. I I was like, I don't understand this. So I went back and dug up the old Swearengen format, which I think is very transparent. It it, the first column is what was in your budget book. So that's the starting point. The, and so you'll see like a and we can talk about it within your committee structure, but I feel like a different format will be a lot more transparent because the format that I was giving and built in given and building the budget, I I couldn't read it. I I've been doing this for a long time and I'm like, wait a minute, what? So I'm hoping that with a little bit of the way the information is presented, that it can be more understand, and that is presented to the public as well. And so I'm hoping it's a little more transparent. It it's not presented by labor unit, but it's presented by personnel services in each department, which tells the story.
I I and I do want to say, I I believe you guys are transparent with the council. It's not user friendly.
I agree.
You know, user friendly for the public to understand.
Yeah, and I think I hope that we're going to be able to present like the summary sheet that will be somewhat more trans, I I think it'll be more user friendly. Because I'm not a budget expert, honestly, and so like if I can understand it, that's like in the positive category. And then, you know, we have to make it even a little more simpler for someone who hasn't been in the building. That's our goal.
All right, well, we'll get back on on track here, back to the presentation. Miguel, to answer your original question that got this conversation started, I I think I know where the administration is going with not necessarily funding a position, but only council can can amend the par. So the police will still be there, right? It's just a matter of whether there there, there's money there or not.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, let's look at the balance sheet side of this. So assets grew by five point eight million dollars or five point two percent to a hundred and sixteen point six million. We had a big increase in unrestricted cash. And also intergovernmental receivables, so money we are expecting from other government agencies. But they were offset by a decrease of six point seven million and due from other funds. So this is internal. We had a a big decrease from, that's due from other city funds that we bill for general fund services. Liabilities grew by one point nine million to fifteen point one million dollars. The growth was due to one point four million increase in unearned revenue, again attributable to cares. But at the end of the day, when we added everything up, our general fund net position increased by seven million dollars or ten point one percent to finish at seventy five point nine million. So it was a, even with COVID, we still managed to have a fairly decent year on the on the fiscal side or on the financial side. So. Any further questions on this slide?
Director, on the on the liabilities, because so this was both on the last, this slide and the last slide. So because the the revenue from care is unearned, we have to classify it. It it gets put in our category as liability?
Yes, yeah, that's the accounting treatment of it that's specified by Gatsby that you, if you get the cash upfront and you know you're going to spend it in the next fiscal year, you have to treat that as a liability. It's not, it's not an asset for you. It's something you're going to spend down the road. So that's why you treat it as a liability.
Sure, okay.
All right, moving on. Let's take a look at debt. Where I'm at right now is I'm on page, as I flip through, I am on page. This is page ninety nine of your hard copy or one twenty seven of the PDF. So the city of Fresno has just under a billion dollars, nine hundred and thirty six million of principal outstanding right now as of June thirtieth. That's what they had on, that's we had on our bonds on our, oh, I should say bonds. It's all our debt in total. That's a big number, no question about it, but it's the first time in about twelve years that we're under a billion in in principal outstanding. And that's been accomplished because of the primarily because of the deficiencies that we've been doing over the last few years. You know, last year, in last fiscal year, we defeased twenty seven point three million of sewer bonds, the sewer two thousand eight. That was the last piece of the sewer two thousand eight. Originally, they were about a hundred and forty million and we defeased about a hundred and sixteen million two years ago, and then we defeased the final twenty seven point three million dollars. So basically, we are paying down debt is the is the short answer here. As council members probably remember, in this, in the revised budget that was approved in October, we were authorized to pay down about twenty million dollars of water debt and pay that off early, which was completed in December about two months ago. So so that helps us because that frees up cash down the road for us to use on other items. And we're not actually making payments on debt that we've incurred. So, so that's a good trend that we're actually paying down our debt over over these fiscal years and in some cases, especially the enterprise funds paying it off early. One other area that's a particular note that has been historically an area of particular notice, how much are we borrowing internally between the various funds? You, some of you might remember the negative fund balance issue from, I guess now maybe about eight, ten years ago. So right now, we have, we have five, roughly five point six million, just under five point six million of loans from one fund to another. These are formal, now they're backed by formal loan documents. There's a payment schedule and we have put all these, we only have four outstanding right now. Sewer loan, lend some money to the general fund for the police training facility. Sewer also paid for the purchase of the fire headquarters, they loaned money for that. And then we have contributions from sewer and fire and water for the fire station eighteen construction. So as of June thirtieth, again, just under five point six million, they're all on payment schedules and they will probably, they will all be exhausted within the next five years. We will have them all paid off. So any questions on this?
Mike, yeah, pause on that. On the fire stations, I recall that those who are all paid for by general fund, the construction of those facilities, why did the sewer folks had to borrow?
There was not money in, there was not sufficient funds in sufficient cash at the moment. Originally, if I, as my memory serves me, that was supposed to be paid with a UGM contribution. The UGM had, did not have sufficient funds in there so that the general fund would have to back it. The general fund did not have sufficient cash beyond its already existing commitments to contribute to that. So there were interfund loan agreements that were brought to council when the construction contract from fire station eighteen was awarded that moved that borrowed money from both sewer and water. So we borrowed from there and it's being paid back from the general fund from some, a little contribution from the UGM, but mostly general fund. And I believe if I remember right, we increased some fire inspection fees in order to help pay for this. So there is a revenue stream coming in to help pay that, to help offset the cost. But the initial cash, the startup cash did come from sewer and water.
Miguel, it's it's because you guys didn't want to raise fees on the fireworks. It's all, it's all your fault.
That wasn't me. That was the previous council. That was Gary.
Director, good question. So looking at the the debt overview, debt that was previously incurred by the RDA and future debt that'll be incurred by the EIFD, none of that counts against this balance sheet, right?
Actually, there is a little bit. The RDA debt is still, we still have a little bit on there. Not very much, about two and a half million. But yes, the EFI EIFD debt will end up on this sheet when it is, or the schedule when it is issued. The IFD because is is what's considered, much like the RDA, it's considered a I guess a oh gosh.
Affiliated.
Yeah, that's not the word. It starts with a S and I can't remember. But yes, it's an agency that that contributes to the to the CAFR. And so yes, that that debt will end up on this schedule when all is said and done.
What what about a, what about this alternate universe where we get the county to join in on the EIFD? Would the debt be split between the agencies or would it still be fully taken on on our balance sheet?
Yes, it would be split between the agencies. Yes, that is correct. Based probably on the level of contribution made by each agency, we would split the debt accordingly.
Got it.
Any other questions on this?
Michael, one question. I I know this is debt that we have, but walk me through the difference between this debt and when we use our public assets for the purpose of, you know, collateral in bonds that we take out. Like, I know there's several, the Salanderina Convention Center, Chantzy are all part of the collateral.
Yeah, good question. So this is just the principle. This is how much we we have borrowed from investors. Behind that, backing all this is the collateral and that's all the buildings that we have put up as collateral. And this shares CAFR, and I'm going to look it up for you. We actually have a schedule of when of all those items that are collateral and when they roll off being collateral. And that is.
My only question is, do we have right now enough collateral for all the bond debt that we've taken out?
Yes, yes, we do.
And how much more space do we have to take, take on debt?
Not much. We have we have a couple of buildings that are are not collateralized. We recently, as you probably remember, took the promenade lot off the collateral list. That was about three and a half million. We have the southeast police substation that is about seven million dollars. We also have the police headquarters building. That is not collateral right now. And then we have a few fire stations around town as well. But that's about it. After that, there there, most of our assets right now are collateral, are serving as collateral for the existing bonds that we have out there. Any other questions?
One last question, Michael, and then I'll quiet. I know that no neighborhood left behind bond that the city took out is coming to its end. How much is that on an annual basis and when does it actually expire?
All right, so no neighborhood left behind.
And George Anne, are you guys planning to, you know, take that freedom and of cash and just stick it into all these vacant positions or is that going to be baked into the budget and we got to find it?
Thanks for the idea. No, we hadn't even considered that. So thank you for bringing this revenue opportunity. Thank you for bringing this revenue opportunity to my attention. I really appreciate it. I'll make sure and give you credit for it.
It's already called for, George Anne. We have.
I'll call it the the Adias Act of funding vacant positions.
Let's call it the Adias Butterfield Oratorium.
We haven't even talked about it, Miguel.
Okay, yeah, but just.
And how long before we paid off?
So just the, the bond is scheduled to be paid off on April first, two thousand twenty three. So we're about two years out. And right now, we have as of June thirtieth, we had eight point one million dollars outstanding on that bond.
And annually, what's the bond payment on that?
The bond payment in FY twenty was three mil, just under three million dollars.
Okay. Do you remember, Michael, what was the total that they borrowed?
The total that was borrowed, let's see here. I've got here, looks like about thirteen million.
Oh, thirteen. I thought it was sixteen. Okay.
Really? Thirteen, that's it?
It was a lot of money back then, Miguel.
How far back was it, Georgia?
Autry.
Twenty years?
Let's see, I think it was Autry term one. So that was like maybe two thousand three, two thousand four?
Yeah, yeah, I believe it was a twenty year bond. So that sounds right.
Yeah, yeah, that was a lot of money back then.
That was only a third of a stadium.
We're going to bond it out, me and Gary, to build the soccer stadium.
I'm done with stadiums, Miguel.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay. All right. So let's talk about pension, you know. The city still has a pension asset. And we are still the only city in California to have one. And I've heard anywhere from three to nine cities in the United States that has one. It's, it really is a shining point in our finances that we are able to have. It's, it really is a shining point in our finances that we are able to have this. And just for, you know, I guess trivia sake. So Gatsby required people to actually put the pension liability on the balance sheet. And that, that was done two years ago for the first time. So people would know how much is actually out there. When we showed up with a pension asset, they had no idea how to record it. We actually had to work with Gatsby to figure a way how to record an asset. They had no experience with it at all. So. Kind of an interesting little side note, or maybe that's just a nerd thing for accountants. But anyhow. So we have a pension asset. Employees is sitting at a hundred and one point three million and fire is at one forty three point six. But as you see, it actually went down last year. So we are right now, if you look at page. Let's see, we want to be at one sixty-five of the book. I got it way down or. Let me see here. Almost there. It is page. No, it isn't that. Oh, well. If you look at page, as I'm flipping through real fast. Let's see. Where are you? There you are. So it'd be page one thirty-seven of the printed book or one sixty-five of the PDF. You'll see that we are at a hundred and nine point five five percent of, of projected. Expenses. That is what the fire system is, is funded at. And on the employee's side, we're funded at just a hair under a hundred and eight percent. But that's down. And so the reason why it's down is a couple of things. First off. Returns, return, they invest all this money. If the returns are not as strong as they were the previous year, that asset goes down. The other thing that factors into it is, and getting back to your point, Councilmember Arias. When we give raises to employees, eventually that eats into that, that asset. Or maybe a better way to put it is, it puts pressure on the retirement office to generate bigger and bigger returns each year. In order to pay for those because a person's salary determines what their eventual retirement is going to be. So something to keep in mind, you know, it's great that we have an asset. It's, it's wonderful. We've had it for years. It's a testament to great financial management. But on the flip side, it can go away and decisions we make. And, and if, if the markets go really bad. It can disappear. And so it's a, it's a fragile asset, one that we should. You know, keep working to maintain, but it is fragile. And, and we saw a decrease in this past year. So.
Director, so you said there's that pressure to generate greater return. I mean, what does that look like? And is, is that mean, is it riskier behavior? I mean, what, what do you mean by that?
So, you know, with, so right now, the safest asset out there is, is a US government bond. You know, that you can invest in. Those government bonds right now are generating. We're just under one percent. That's what you're getting on a government bond. And that's the safest money that you can have out there. So. Anytime you, you need to get a bigger return because you're looking at, you know, payments, the, the assumed rate for the. For the retirement system is seven percent. They, they say they have to earn seven percent to keep up with the costs right now. So if you're only earning one on a bond and you've got to hit seven, you're going to invest in stocks and other investments in order to make up for that. What you can't make on bonds. So yes, you do have to get into riskier assets, riskier than bonds. Are they? You know, it's a stock, it might be real estate, it could be something else, but it is definitely riskier than bonds. And because you have to hit that seven percent target that's out there.
Yeah, ta- taking a look at this graph, I mean, we've been in pretty decent shape. We saw a dip in seventeen and the dip again last fiscal year. Are there, are there projections? I mean, you know, I, again, we, we don't use the P word around, around. City Hall, we haven't hardly since my term, but I mean. Is there any projection if, and if not, why, why not?
You know, we do have in the CAFER a, a small projection. And this is required under the, under Gatsby. You can find on page one thirty-nine of the, of the hardcover. Or, or the, the hard copy or one sixty-seven of the PDF. But it shows what would happen. We're at seven percent. It would show what would happen if that dropped to six percent. And we'd go from an, a pension asset to a pension liability. So we would, we, we need to generate. Around a six and a half percent return each year in order to keep up with the, the salaries that are. And the retirement obligations that are being, that are projected to occur over the next, over the next few years.
Okay.
Yeah. Are you done, Nelson?
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question. Don't we have also, when people pay their taxes, isn't there a property tax override for pensions?
Yes. So there is a property tax override on, on. On everyone's property tax bill. That money is actually going into the general fund. And is being used to pay for the pension obligation bond that we have. So it covers our full pension obligation bond payment that the general fund makes. The pension obligation bond was issued in two thousand two. No, it was issued before. That's the refi. The pension obligation bond was issued in the early nineties. And basically, we had a pension liability. And so what the, what the administration council back then decided was let's issue a bond to cover that liability. And then we would pay it off using this property tax override. And that's what's happened over the last thirty years. And so, yes, we do, it, it doesn't go into the pension system directly. But it is used to pay for that bond that we issued many, many years ago.
And what, one, what was that bond? It was used to cover the costs?
Yes, it was used to cover a pension liability that we had in our system. And this was like thirty years ago.
If we didn't have that tax, then we wouldn't be in the plus that we're in now.
It's, it's like thirteen million a year, right?
Yeah, it's, it's.
We have a fully funded pension and we celebrate is because the taxpayers are subsidizing that with the property tax override.
It's about sixteen million a year is what we generate. And yeah, it's. Well. Well, no, it, it's, 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 we're kind of mixing things together. The, the pension liability was, was fixed when they issued the bond. That got fixed. The, the bill for that, I guess the, the ongoing payment is what the taxpayers are paying. So they, the taxpayers today are paying for fixing it thirty years ago. That's what happened.
And it's the property, it's property owners, though, right? So it's not every, it's people, it's right, it's property taxpayers.
It is a property tax, yes.
But if that wasn't being paid, we would be in the negative, is what I'm saying.
No, the pension system would still have a, an asset. We fixed, we cured the asset.
No, but if we wouldn't have issued the bond, Mike, if we would not have issued that bond in the seventies. Unless, unless our pension managers like, you know, rode the wave and managed to overcome. You know, who knows, you know, if, if they could have overcome it, I doubt it. But if they could have been done, done some Kabuki investments and. Managed to overcome the, the liability, maybe, but doubtful.
Well, if they had invested it, let's say for Miguel, in Amazon, we would be, have lots of money.
Probably.
Okay, having said that, so that comes to an end, though, doesn't it? Isn't it coming to the, the obligation bond? I thought that is expiring.
Yes, you're right. We're, we're, the, the end of it is on the horizon. The last payment is due. On June first of two thousand twenty-nine is when the pension obligation. But we still got, yeah, we still got about eight years, but it, it's closer than, than it has been. So we're getting close.
But Mike, in, in eight years, because when we adopt a budget every year, we also affirmatively continue to collect that tax. That override, right?
Yes.
In, in eight years, is, are we going to continue to collect? Do we have the legal authority to continue to collect that tax, even though the bond has been paid off?
You know, if, under the. Under the legislation that allowed that, my understanding is that as long, if we have a pension liability. As of that date, we can continue collecting the tax. It may not be at the same rate, but we can continue. So. If there is no liability.
It's just a matter of you guys reducing the general fund obligation to the pension to say that we have a gap and therefore justify continuing collecting it.
I don't know that we would do that. It could end up that we just don't get the return that we had planned, that we'd estimated. That, as I mentioned earlier, you know, if we go from a seven percent return to a six, we have a liability. And so it, it just is going to depend over the next eight years whether we end up with an asset. We still have an asset or not. But, but to your point, if we have an asset in eight years, still have a pension asset. I don't think we would have the ability to collect that tax, no.
If you pay off the bond, it's a thirty year deal and it's paid off. How do you, how, how are we able to continue collecting something that's paid off?
Because we might have still, we might have, again, have a pension liability.
Yeah, but then you have to then. Have some sort of legislative action or go to the voters or something. You can't just.
No, my understanding is the, the legislation that allowed us to do this says that. As long as there's a pension liability, we can collect. So it, it all depends if there's going to be a liability at the end of eight years or not. That's going to be the issue.
So we wouldn't have to issue a.
Pull the language.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Doug.
I'm having somebody pull the language about expiration or so forth.
Okay.
So in short, we've had a public safety tax for, since nineteen ninety. Because it's been funding the, all, all the city pensions, right? And it's been subsidizing or otherwise a general fund contribution.
Well, you can't say it's just public safety because we have two different systems.
That's right.
One is completely not public safety.
So it's both. We've had a, we've had a municipal tax for governing, for governing since the nineteen nineties.
For pensions. Yeah, yeah, we have had a, this tax in since the early nineties to cover a pension. To cover a bond payment that filled a pension liability.
That was a Republican council that passed that tax. It wasn't Democrats.
Wouldn't have been, we wouldn't have done it.
You all like taxes. You just don't like paying. Paying the money.
Eight taxes.
Any other questions on our pension obligation? Okay. So if you're, if you've been thoroughly fascinated by this discussion and, you know, want more. I recommend that you look at the CAFER in two specific areas. The first is the Management Discussion Analysis. That's on pages five to twenty-nine of the hard copy of your book. That gives you kind of a, 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 a real summary of all the different funds and all the, or the, all the major funds. And the financial. Results that all of them had incurred over the past fiscal year. I also recommend that you look at pages two oh eight through two thirty-three, which is the, the statistics section. This section gives you ten years of data on a variety of financial and. Operational statistics that the organization has. And, and to be honest, it's the only place that I know of. That it gives you ten years of data. So you can really get a good, good feel for trends within that, within those pages. So, like I said, I recommend that you take a look at them if you are of further interest. And with that, my presentation is concluded.
All right, if there are no other questions on this presentation, we'll move on to the, the next item, the status updates on the different audits.
Good afternoon. Kriti Agarwal, Principal and Internal Auditor. I have a presentation that I have, that I wanted to share with you all. I'm not sure, should the, does the city clerk, I was going to have one of my internal auditors do it. But she's in attendance mode. Should she?
I can, I can do it for you if you like.
Yeah.
Okay, one second.
Mike, on your presentation, my only recommendation is that, that is such a good overview that you should make sure any new council member gets it. Virtually in person because it's a wealth of information that newbie should have.
Thank you, council member. And I, just for your information, we did meet with Councilmember Maxwell yesterday and gave him this entire presentation. And he seemed to find value in that, in that discussion. So, but thank you.
Okay, can everybody see the internal audit division status?
Can you all see the slideshow or not?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Great.
Just let me know when you want me to change the slide.
Okay, will do. Thank you. So once again, my name is Kriti Agarwal. I am the Principal Internal Auditor for the City of Fresno. Thank you for having me here this afternoon. I am going to provide a brief update on. The status of our current audits as well as recently completed audits. And with that, could we go to the next slide? Thank you. So the first art that I'll be going over will be our fire audit report, which actually was completed. At the end of last year on December thirty-first, it was completed. And there were a number of findings that we identified from the audit. It was a scope we, we reviewed the, it was an overtime audit where our scope period went from. Just to be clear, it was from July first, two thousand seventeen to June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. And from that, we identified that there's been high usage of overtime hours incurred by sworn firefighter. Fire from sworn firefighters. Top five percent of firefighters receiving overtime in F Y nineteen had overtime hours of. Ranging anywhere from one thousand three hundred forty-six to over twenty-three hundred hours. And this, however, does include out of county hours as well. It, it was partly also due to the fact that the, our fire department does not have a mandatory rest period. After a numerous number of consecutive shifts. And this is common amongst fire departments throughout. California, specifically in the Central Valley. But there are a number of other. Local municipalities in California that do have some sort of rest period. One of them, the closest being Visalia. And then Sacramento has implemented one as well as L A County. And that, the, the figure, I think to your right, kind of goes into a little bit more detail on what sort of rest periods they have.
City auditor, the, the twenty-three hundred hours of overtime, what does that equate to financially to the city?
I could have, I'd have to go back to check the audit report. Can I get back to you on that?
Do we have an hourly wage for firefighters or how do we, how do we pay those typically?
Let me double check.
I'm just trying to see if firefighters making a thousand dollars in, in overtime or they're making a hundred thousand in overtime.
Just so you know, from a budget perspective, the fire department budgets six million dollars a year in overtime. And you will see the top overtime, it's six figures for the, the. Tends to be like battalion chiefs and other folks. It, it tends to run, there's a handful of people that go into six figures.
Do, do, do we classify firefighters like management where they don't get overtime, they, they're salaried? Or is this everyone get overtime from the top to the bottom? Is that the same thing for police officers?
I believe there's police and fire management does not receive overtime, but the, the. I'll just stick with fire for the moment. But I do believe fire captains, firefighter specialists and firefighters all receive overtime.
I think battalion chiefs do too.
Yeah, I think you're right.
They do. There, there were a number of them that were on our list that had received some overtime.
Gary, can you sponsor an item for council members to receive overtime?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Legal counsel, the, the mandatory rest period, is that something that is done unilaterally by the department or is that a council item?
I would assume that's M O U.
Just so you know, council members, we are in discussions with the fire department and. This is something that I know the mayor and the city manager want to put on the table as a discussion point. Especially if we end up moving forward with the new safer officers because of the cost that's going to be involved. We want to try and find a way to reduce overtime and, and the, the coverage model. So the mayor was personally involved in the meeting and I think him having the background of how police department covers shift. He was sort of able to talk that language. So he was very, very interested in their deployment model and. He was sort of able to talk that language. So he was very, very interested in their deployment model and how that could possibly be altered to save money and to save overtime.
I think as, as long as the fire department doesn't adopt the workman's comp um, strategy that police has, I think will be good.
You're such a hater, Miguel.
Um, Krita, I did find in the um, in the fire, fire audit report. Um, I know that like on page six of the report where it talks about you guys are trying to compare the new hire versus overtime. And it was like the overtime rate for an existing firefighter is about forty bucks an hour.
Yes, that sounds, that sounds about right.
Um, so just to give you some number to work with.
Thank you. That's really helpful.
Uh, sorry, Krita, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead. That's fine. Um, I appreciate it. Thank you. Um, and then, so with those findings, we, when we met with the fire department, we provided them some recommendations. Um, and for this specific finding, um, we had said that they should uh, consider establishing a maximum number of hours or attempts that they can find, that a firefighter can find their own replacement. And um, consider establishing a mandatory rest period. And um, are they, based upon our conversations with them and um, their management response. Um, is our understanding that this is more of a labor relations discussion? That, that was what they'd explained to us. Um, if they were to, to, that was the issue that they said that they faced um, in sort of implementing such recommendations.
And, and, and just for the, for the benefit of the public, and um, I know we have the economists on the line here and council member Sparsa, but and on your findings, somebody's making between fifty-three thousand and ninety-three thousand dollars in overtime.
Yeah.
I'd let that sit.
Yeah.
Ninety-three thousand dollars in overtime in one year.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure how that is sustainable for our pension system or our budget. Um, and, and I recall being con- convinced that adding more firefighters would reduce the need for overtime. So um, I'm hopeful that, you know, that will come to fruition because I don't think the general public would be very supportive of the council over paying people ninety-three thousand dollars in overtime.
I, and that all has to do with um, the last time firefighters were hired as to whether or not they would go in the relief pool. And it's my understanding that the decision at that time was made to fund another station instead of putting officers in the relief pool. So um, it's a, the, it's almost like um, a little bit of like finding a unicorn of finding the balance of the, the minimum amount of people you need for daily staffing, you need some in the relief pool. Um, and I got to tell you, it's the best kept secret in the fire department because it's a cultural thing where firefighters do not want to give up that overtime. Having said that, in discussions that we were having internally about the safer grant um, for forty, you know, uh, I believe, you know, certainly the city manager, a square to put on the table. Oh, okay, perfect. Um, you know, this is going to cost six million dollars in fiscal year twenty-six. Perfect. That's your overtime budget. And you know, the look on the face of the fire staff was, oh, no, no, that's different. That's completely, we, you know, we have to have both. And so we're going to have to have some really um, serious conversations about their staffing model.
And, and, and George, and in defense of firefighters, because I do like them, Gary. Um, I recall the conversation being, if we don't build that additional fire station, we can't improve any more developments of housing. And Grandville and the housing developers are mad at us because we're not giving occupancy permits because we're not building that station. So it's almost like development was driving the deployment strategy and now we're having to pay for it in the, in the world of overtime.
Yeah, I, I can't, I can't speak to that. I wasn't here, but I just know moving forward as we're having discussions with them about the contract. I know that the mayor and the city manager want to dig into the, the deployment model.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Uh, any more questions uh, on this slide? None? Okay. What, uh, could you please, next slide, please? Thank you. Uh, the next finding we have identified was there was um, in terms of the overtime forms, it's called the FD twenty-two forms. Um, we identified numerous ones to be incomplete. Uh, forty-eight, um, to be exact, were FD twenty-two forms were actually missing. And a hundred and seven were missing some sort of approval either from the battalion chief or from a supervisor. So um, we broke it out. We have a pie graph right there to kind of break out a part, the number, the percentage that was complete, which was, as you can see, the forty-four percent. And then the breakout of either a signature missing and approval missing from the supervisor and battalion chief. Um, a signature missing from just one, like the supervisor or the battalion chief. And then um, an overall just an incomplete or missing FD twenty-two form altogether. And.
Also for yourself, that form is missing, that's the written documentation that they were supposed to be doing overtime, but there's no, nothing proving that they were authorized to do it.
Correct. Yes, that is correct. Yes.
So they will have put in for overtime, but there's nothing to support the fact that they were authorized to do it.
Mm-hmm. That's right. Yeah. Um, and so our recommendation to the department was to work with their staff, specifically supervisors and battalion chiefs. And payroll on um, verifying that uh, FD twenty-two forms are up, you know, appropriately reviewed and approved. And if there are any sort of um, changes to their process, meaning if, if a form does not actually require both the supervisor and the battalion chief's authorization, then that sort of communication, that sort of procedural change should actually be um, communicated in, in their administrative manual.
What, why, I mean, what, what, what causes a form to be missing? Somebody's supposed to be making sure, right? I mean, how, how does the form go missing?
I mean, I, I mean, I would say that maybe that their record retention process may not be um, you know, uh, you know, accurately intact, I guess you could say. Um, but that, that was, they just said that they, you know, they could not be located. And I mean, our, our understanding was then the process was not complete then.
Well, so you have recommendations to rectify that, I imagine, because you can't have twenty-two percent of these forms.
Right. And so that's why we've, we've, our recommendation is that they need to work with their staff um, to develop stricter policies and sort, and complete, you know, make, ensuring that it is reviewed and approved and that they are have maintaining a, a more accurate retention policy.
Council member, in the actual audit, um, you know, there was the, the recommendation from the internal audit staff and the management staff did agree. That would be the fire chief recommended that they needed to improve their process. So um, we'll be keeping an eye on it. Um, you know, we'll, we'll give a couple month, a couple months before we go back and check in with fire to make sure that um, they've got their process in place to correct the problem.
Good. Any other questions? Okay, next slide, please. Uh, a third uh, finding was uh, also related to the FD twenty-two form where it was an untimely, untimely shift replacement or overtime uh, from, from approvals. Um, the signing of, of the payroll cutoff days can lead to, after the payroll cut off, it can lead to payroll issues such as overpayment to underpayments. And we actually identified forty-two instances where there were overpayments uh, for a total of twenty-one thousand dollars, eight hundred eighty dollars and sixty-one cents. So oh, just slightly shy of twenty-two K that occurred during our scope period. In addition to that, we also identified forty-six instances where there were underpayments of a little over twenty thousand that occurred during the scope period. Um, out of thirty-three instances where a payback agreement, so in that process, um, for if there was an overpayment, um, uh, a payback, uh, there is a payback agreement that they have in place. And so out of those thirty-three instances where a payback agreement was reached, um, nine of those were actual, where the actual date uh, an overpayment occurred and a date when the payback agreement was issued exceeded a hundred days. Um, so with that, yes.
I have a question. So uh, why, why were there only thirty-three instances of payback agreements when there were?
So it, there may have been thirty, I believe, what was it? Is, they don't, they, they have to reach out to that individual to agree to a payback agreement. And it's not, there is currently, it's not um, a mandatory process where a payment agreement has to occur if we have overpaid that individual.
So, so. Paris Barza, if I can chime in, state law prohibits us, if, if we overpay an employee, state law prohibits us from uh, just simply deducting that overpayment on the next, on their next or subsequent paychecks. We actually have to get their permission in order to uh, in order to get a payback of the overpayment. Uh, and so what happened here, you had forty-two instances where there were overpayments and only thirty-three where there was a payback agreement reach. So nine employees said, too bad, I'm keeping the money. And there was nothing we could do about it.
And that, that's okay. That wouldn't be on someone's uh, um, uh, some oversight supervisory report. It would be just okay. They could say, hey, go screw yourself. You over, you overpaid me and that, and they can just do that and we're okay with that.
Well, as Mike mentioned, um, you know, as state law, I mean, there's nothing much, I mean, there's, there's very little that we as a city can do.
Yeah, I, I, auditor, I'm clear that we can't get the money. We can't force them, give us the money back. But i- is there consequences for the supervisor who approved the overpayment? And, and what's the condition of the citywide? I'm, I'm assuming we're making overpayment citywide, right? It's not just this department. Like, uh, how many of our employees are just keeping the money that they didn't earn?
So I, I am, I am not aware of um, other, that could very well be true. I am not aware of instances of, you know, other departments overpaying their, our employees. Um, that could be a potential audit that we could look into. That's a good question um, that I'd have to look into and get more research on that. Um, but that's definitely a potential audit. So thank you for that. Um, uh, in terms of your question.
I still don't understand how somebody can uh, basically give the finger to a supervisor uh, when they've been overpaid and there's nothing we can do. I understand the state says.
Right.
I, I can look into that from a personnel perspective. I don't know the answer. Um, but I, I mean, I know we're not okay with reading this. I mean, we're, I'm not okay with this. Um, I don't know if there, I don't, you know, all I know is what I'm reading in the management response. So we can go back and see if there was anything done um, at the supervisor battalion chief level. Um, and you know, a- and actually I would make sure that folks know that, you know, your committee is concerned about this issue and wants to make sure that um, the issue, you know, is being addressed. Um, you know, that, that's helpful.
When you look at that, can, can the auditors review whether we need a citywide policy on overpayment?
And I hear what you're saying. The one thing I would tell you is just um, intuitively, I think where we're going to see this is in a twenty-four hour operation. Um, because you know, there are some other doc, um, other departments, for instance, water. They do have some twenty-four seven operations, but it's like two people a night, you know, where I think um, I would say, for instance, having worked in DPU, you have a pretty good handle on people who are working overtime, who are normal um, shift type employees. But when you get into the twenty-four hour where you've got a fire or you've got an emergency incident where you're keeping people over and things are very fluid, I, to me, that's where the biggest problem is going to be. If you want us to look at it citywide, um, I'm sure.
But, but you're done. And, and I don't want you to do more work than necessary, but isn't technically a police, fire, DPU twenty-four hour operations where they can be kept in overtime?
Yes, and but, but what I will tell you is I, just having worked in DPU, it's not all sick eight hundred employees. You know, we schedule like there's a handful of employees that are on call for twenty-four hours in case something breaks in the middle of the night. It's not like firefighters or police officers where if there's a crisis, it's like, you know, you've got, you know, fifty, sixty people there, swoof, who may be working overtime. It's, it's um, much more unusual situation, same thing with public works.
Yeah, from my perspective, police and fire are the majority of our employees. They're the largest liability to our city finances. So um, and those, those are the places where this um, risk lies. So um, I, I, I don't know to Gary's point how we just let somebody keep money and then everybody goes by their own, you know, business.
Maybe we didn't. There could have been disciplinary action taken. I don't know the answer to that, but we can look at it.
Yeah, I, 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 I'd be curious too, you know, I mean, uh, when, you know, if uh, they're getting notified right after uh, payday. Or if it's, you know, a month and a half later or something, I, I, I'm, I'm not sure. And that may make a difference in people's willingness to uh, to want to engage in one of the payback agreements. But taking a look at this, it sounds like out of the twenty, uh, out of the twenty-two thousand, it probably left somewhere around five or six on the table because of those nine employees. But I mean, if, if it's proportional.
I'm returning any of my overtime and overpayments.
I don't even get overtime, or else I would keep it.
You gotta know somebody, Miguel. I know people.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Um, and then just to quickly go over the recommendations that we um, that we, that we have asked of the fire department for this specific finding is that they should work on ensuring with the supervisors and battalion chiefs that um, the FD forms are ti- are submitted timely, they're completed and reviewed timely, uh, and they're signed off um, pri- prior to submission. Um, for example, to expedite the process electronically submitting the forms to payroll would be um, a, a good mechanism to have um, to help eliminate the um, potential issues of underpayments or overpayments. Um, battalion chief should also ensure that all sign-offs occur prior to the payroll cutoff date. And lastly, uh, payroll, fire payroll staff should ensure that the payroll is reviewed in a timely manner to ensure that overpayments and underpayments are identified and resolved promptly.
Uh, Kriti, where, where does the, where does the buck stop, right? I mean, the last couple, this slide and the previous slide. I mean, I, I think it all relies on just sort of there being a more effective system in place. I mean, who do, where does, where does the accountability lie ultimately?
Ultimately, I would say with um, our, with the supervisors and battalion chiefs. Uh, that, that would be um, what I would say.
I would say ultimately the city manager. I mean, really, the buck stops with us. So I, I get that we had nothing to do with the battalion chief, but ultimately, we should be supervising the fire chief, who should be supervising the battalion chiefs. So um, I'm, I'm just, my philosophy is, you know, the buck stops with, you know, who's at the top of the chain of, the chain of command. And for the fire department, it's the city manager.
Well, that, that, that makes me, that answer makes me feel better, right? In terms of um, you know, the, the command coming down, down the chain of commands. Um, not with the folks where it's been happening, right? Um, so that makes me feel a little more at ease.
I know Tom, and I can speak for Tommy on this because when it comes to departmental, there's, you know, there's been some departmental autonomy. And I know um, Tommy has communicated that, you know, we're going to bring stuff back to the mothership. Um, so that's his intent.
Got it. Thank you.
As long as the mothership's going to be responsible and accountable and own it.
Yeah, I mean, don't we? Don't we anyway? We do. I mean, whether we like it or not, I, I, we own it. Tommy can thank me later for that statement.
All right, well, let, let's proceed.
Next slide, please. Okay, uh, last finding for uh, this, for this audit is our incorrect, uh, incorrect premium rates used for FSLA overtime caused more overpayments, unfortunately. There are five instances that occurred during our scope period where there was incorrect premium rate that was used um, for the FSLA overtime. Um, that uh, there was a total of uh, twelve thousand eight hundred eight dollars and forty-seven cents in overpayments that were made within our scope period. Um, and therefore our recommendation was that uh, the, the rates, the premium rates used in the FSLA overtime need to be thoroughly reviewed once an MOU is finalized. Um, and uh, what I, what had happened was the MOUs, there was um, they expire and then um, they are, they're renewed, but that, the rates do not, some of the rates do not, the previous periods rates do not basically are, are used even though um, they're not updated once the MOU is finalized. So I, um, that was the issue with this, um, with this finding.
So, uh, sorry, that was uh, confusing language.
Sorry.
You're saying that's the, there's a lag there. You're saying that's the, there's a lag there.
Yes.
The number didn't get changed in the computer. So when the new contract with the new rate went into effect, nobody went and changed the number in the computer that does the calculations. That's the way I understand it.
That is exactly.
Of underpayments? It's all overpayment?
I'm sorry, was a question?
There was no examples of underpayments in this category?
We did not identify any underpayments. There was only overpayments.
Well, think about it. Labor rates are always going up, never down.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, any other questions for, um, fu- fire, this, this specific audits? We're going to move on to an update on our current audits that are ongoing.
I, I just want to point out that the fire department has done a good job of making programmatic and deployment changes, given the, the significant incident happened years ago. And it now looks like there's got to be a lot of time spent on the administrative side. Um, and I, and, and I'm hopeful that the new city manager team will, will take that, especially since we just spent eleven million dollars on the new software system that handles human capital, finance and everything. So I, I am hopeful, Georgeanne, to, back to your point of accountability, that that eleven million we're spending is going to resolve some of these issues as well.
Um, yes, I agree, but just remember, there still has to be a human that enters the number into the eleven million dollar system. So garbage in, garbage out, but I appreciate what you're saying, council member.
Okay, next slide. Oh, oh. Oh, thank you. Okay, um, okay, so current audits in progress. Um, we currently are work, uh, working on completing a follow-up review of our parking audit. Um, this is a fault, like I said, it's a follow-up audit. So, um, we are currently in the report writing stage. Um, we recently did have a meeting with, um, the parking department and we provided them the, um, an update on where things stand and our over, um, overall findings. Um, and, um, like I mentioned, in the report writing phase, so we're, we're almost at the finish line. And then, um, the next audit we are ha- we are working on is another follow-up review for police payroll. Um, we, back in, gosh, it was two thousand nineteen, I think, of, of a, we completed the audit in June of two thousand nineteen. We did a payroll audit, um, and now we are completely, we are in the process of doing, um, the follow-up to that. Um, and we, we're in the, we are currently in the fieldwork stage. We had an entrance conference with, uh, the department last week and we are currently also working on gathering the documents for, to begin our analysis and fieldwork.
So, um, I, these are my pet peeves, these two audits, because they were completed years ago and they still don't seem to have closure. When do we anticipate final closure and the council getting report on? What was fixed and what wasn't? And, um, on, on these two items specifically, do we have a, a dead, a deadline?
So for parking, uh, we're, we're very close. Um, I would anticipate, I'm hoping by the end of March for parking. And, um, and just, I, I can't, obviously, right now, because the report, we are, the audit is not complete yet. I cannot, you know, give out specific information, but overall I will say that we have been very pleased with, uh, what we have seen so far. Um, so a lot of those findings that we have identified in the original audit, I do believe, uh, have been, um, been worked upon significantly. Um, I do believe you all will be pleased as well. Uh, in regards to PD, uh, it, we are in, it's, we are on the very beginning initial stages of it. I would like to say, um, fingers crossed, you know, by the end of June. Um, but that's, you know, if all of, if, you know, all the stars align and everything works out perfectly, meaning, um, we get all the documentation when we're requested, when, you know, by the request date, you know, there's not too many outstanding que- you know, questions from, um, that we have from, uh, for the department. Um, fingers crossed, yeah, by the end of June, we are hoping to have it completed.
All right. For, for my perspective, Georgeanne, and this is more for the administration. Um, you know, if it's going to take us three to four years to finish an audit and from the point of, you know, beginning to resolution, um, I, I want to entertain the conversation of external auditors because, you know, as council members, we have four-year terms. And I feel like at the minimum, we ought to be able to see improvements because these audits are designed to just simply, you know, lead to efficiencies and improvements, you know, um, hopefully in a timely manner. But, um, you know, the, the police department audit, we're going to our third chief and we still don't have a closure on that audit. Like, that's not reasonable or acceptable, um, and from my position. So I, I, I know a lot of these things are being worked on and you guys are new, but, um, we're to our third ma- uh, chief, police chief, and we still don't have closure on what's been fixed.
Yeah. Yeah, I hear you. Um, we've talked internally about, um, whether we need to beef up internal audit staff or have an outsourcing, um, opportu- you know, uh, firm on hand to be able to shift work to if our folks are busy. So I think Tommy's heard you loud and clear on the, take the time it's taking to get these done. And, um, uh, we're willing to look at those options.
And in full disclosure, I'm going to bring that up during the budget process. So for you guys' own internal planning.
Okay.
By then, hopefully at least these two audits will be done, but if for, for some reason, we get distracted on five new audits and we're going on the fourth police chief, then you know.
Yeah. Yeah, I hear you.
Okay, any other questions?
No, thank you. Thanks. Thank you for the work. I, I do recognize it's been difficult for everyone with COVID and that during COVID, the audit department played a significant role in auditing our use of COVID funds and the vendors that we utilize in a speedy manner. So I, I do fully recognize that you guys have been short-staffed at times and doing distance and being added more work. Um, it's just extremely important on these departments that make up the majority of our money for us to get closure in a timely fashion.
Thank you.
Um, council member Brettafield, any last comments before I go?
Appreciate all the, all the work, uh, from audited people, from Mike Lima. Um, and, uh, appreciate what, uh, Georgeanne and the administration is going to do as well.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, sounds good. Good work. Look forward to, uh, tomorrow here in the coming months. Uh, at this point, before we adjourn, I'd like to go out to the, uh, the public. Does anybody like to, uh, speak? Give you, uh, two minutes, uh, to address his body.
I see no hands raised.
No hands raised. I'll go ahead and close, uh, public comment. Uh, do we need a motion to adjourn clerk?
Uh, not really.
All right, then this meeting is adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank, thank you very much.